And property maintenance code under part thirteen entitled Building Codes of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Bucyrus. I believe you made the changes.
Um, are we talking about vacant structures?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Chairman, what, what I included was with the residential properties, they still have to register, but there will be no fee for them to encourage property owners to register their vacant structures. Um, commercial will still have the fee that was outlined in the document originally, but I, I, I feel like commercials reasonable have the fee, the residential, uh, could be adopted by the, the public much, much better if we have no fee for them.
I think that would encourage them to register.
Yeah. They still would have the, the fines and penalties if they don't register. So really, the only thing that has changed is they won't have to pay the annual fee if they do register, but if they don't, they still could be subject to the fees.
Okay. Mr. Gerner, have you seen this?
Not his.
Okay.
I've seen the original, but that makes sense. I guess my only then issue would be, um, defining what residential and commercial would be. So, um, Mr. Miller is a landlord, right? So those properties that he rents residentially are his commercial business, but it's also a residential property. So there would just have to be something in there to delineate what falls into what category.
So, single family home?
Um, so it-
Yeah, could be. I, 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 I'm just thinking out loud, but I hadn't contemplated what exactly that would be.
I think we could use, uh, there are definitions for commercial or residential at the view, so anything four units or less that is used as primary residence would be considered a residential property. Anything four units or more, or any sort of industrial, commercial, um, other use would be commercial.
Okay, and we could add that in there somewhere, right?
Yeah, and those are, those are typical definitions that we could pull from somewhere else. It's not something that we need to create.
Right. So it'd be three units or less for residential.
Is it three?
Oh, I don't know, but you said four units or less, if four units or more.
So I think it is-
So I'm not sure what the-
Yeah, so I think it is four units or less now than two is residential, but I could be wrong on that. It is three or four, it's somewhere in there, and we can pull that definition.
Yeah, but that's a quick, easy fix.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just said, that's a quick, easy fix, makes sense. If you want to encourage participation in a program, that's a way to accomplish that.
Mr. White?
I agree.
Mr. Burton?
Agreed.
Ms. Sharman?
I agree.
Good, good?
Good.
Aaron, you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so we hand this over to Mr. Gerner and he fine tunes it or lets us know of any adjustments?
Yeah, I can bring the revised draft and then, um, you guys could request legislation, which has actually already been completed, but send it to full council at that point.
Okay.
Ms. Lee, I had a question about the exemptions. Do we have a time limit for exemptions? Because like, I know that the vacant for sale was twelve months, I mean, are we gonna need to have them come back and, and then pay for being a vacant building after twelve months? Well, even, you know, I thought that might need cleared up a little bit.
Commercial?
Well, just, you, you've got your vacant property fees, and then the next thing down, the thirteen sixty-one point oh seven is the exemptions as part of that. And I, I like that there's exemptions, but I also think that we should probably have some limits for exemptions, because if you've had the same property for sale for eight years, because you're not actually trying to sell it, that kind of defeats the purpose of, uh, the rules being in place. It's just finding a way around them.
So I, just reading that, I think that's section C that talks about the properties listed for sale by licensed real estate agent or broker. It does say twelve months in there, doesn't it?
Yeah, I, I just didn't know if, if, if we needed to elaborate, like, on some of those others where they've got those exemptions listed, like, after a certain amount of time.
It's like a property under current construction?
Yeah.
It does not have a time limit for that.
Right. So if I wanted to currently be constructing my property for, I don't know how many years, I could do that, and as long as it, I, I made it look like I was working on it every so often, you know?
Yeah. And just reading that section A, it just states that it expires, that there's no registration fee until the expiration of the longest running current active period. I think that's referring to the-
To the permits?
The actual permits, and I don't know if our permits have a duration-
That's, I, that's what I wasn't sure, I, I started looking at going, well, I mean, if I could get a permit that didn't really have a, an expiration date, then I'm in, you know? If that was the kind of person I was.
But if our goal is to find out which properties are vacant or under construction, at least if we had that permit, we have some record.
Some record.
It isn't, now you're looking at two different places to get these records of what's vacant. I, I see your point, though.
Just the two that I can talk to Landon about?
And figure out our permitting thing, and if we have to put like a reasonable timeframe, you know, um, so you have to check in every six months with the status or a, um, you know, your proposed timeframe, I mean, so, uh, some construction is going to take a weekend, some construction's going to take six months. So I'll talk to Landon and then bring a report back.
That would be unlike on, that wouldn't have anything, wouldn't be adhered, it would be in his office more or less.
Um, if there is a modification in there under like the construction portion, uh, it would be something like, as, as evidenced by that timeframe's outlined in the permit issued by the zoning administrator, something to that effect. Just to give it some sort of definition on the timeframe.
I do think it has something similar to that. It's probably not the best wording.
Yeah.
But it essentially says it runs as long as the current permit runs. It's, it's not that long the exemption runs.
Good.
Bill, you got anything on this?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Everybody sounds good to me.
Yeah, that was the only question I had.
Okay. Mr. Gerner, it's in your hands.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, complaint form. That Mr. White had put together for us, did everybody see that? Is that in our package?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Take a minute, look it over. Mr. White? Anything to say about it?
No, I just basically, I took the, the whole complaint form and just kind of brought it up to the speed, I mean, it could be one page, it could be from the back, but basically, I think I've included just about everything, unless somebody finds something I didn't, but I always put other in there also, so, and they can describe what the other information is. You know, we, we talked about the complaint can be anonymous, so they could circle yes and not have to fill out the name or phone number, but if the complaint says, no, I don't want to be anonymous, then the name and phone number of the complainant should be in there, and then initial notes, and then the person who took the complaint, their name, their title, their sig, I believe it should be signed. Every complaint form that is received, taken, should have this signature of the person that took the complaint and a date and time on it.
This wouldn't take the place of somebody calling in and making a complaint that way?
This form would have to be filled out every time, no matter if it was a phone call, online complaint form, this, this complaint form should be filled out each and every time, even if somebody called in and said, hey, this person at this address, you know, is in violation of the property maintenance code, then this form should be filled out, okay? Because it is an official complaint, even, even though it's verbal, anonymous, it, it should, every complaint form should be filled out, whether it's in person, anonymous, mailed in, or a phone call. Any type of contact, it should be in there and written down and documented.
And they don't have to give their name, because they can rename anonymous if they so desire.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I did obtain a copy of the current, uh, property maintenance complaint card from the engineer and zoning office over there. Uh, from what Mr. White has, uh, put together for us here, it pretty much follows the same guidelines. Uh, Mr. White did, um, add some, uh, additional items in, in his that is not on the complaint form here. I think that Mr. White's is a very good, uh, form that we could use if anybody wants, cares to see the original here. You have one too?
Can I add, Mr. Chairman, I received two different cards. So we may want to find one, stick to one name complaint.
Yeah. That's sort of why we-
So we don't have three floating around. I mean, they're, they're a little bit different, but-
If we file this one, then, I mean, if we go ahead and go with this one, then we gotta get rid of those. Mr. Martin?
I'm good with this.
I'm just gonna start over here and go around.
Yeah, so I, I'm not sure what the printing costs are for those, because thinking from a, I guess, cost standpoint, those special paper, everything else, thicker, I mean, it seems like that's probably pretty expensive to do.
Get away from that.
Yep, and this will fit better in documents and folders and everything else. To me, a regular paper makes a lot of sense, and as long as you fit on one page, I do think that's important. Just to front them back, I think, sorry.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I agree.
I agree for this one, yes.
Kenny?
I mean, I'd stick with the color difference, so it stands out in the file, but other than that, yeah, this doesn't, it doesn't hurt anything to change it like this, this actually gives a little bit more space to write and a few more things that people, you might not have been thinking of the word, and you spotted written out here, and that's, you know?
Yeah, I'm good with, uh, Mr. White's proposed form.
Any legal aspects to the? Looks good?
Looks good.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Yeah, no problem. I, I went through the, all the stuff that was basically been taken, like pools, vegetation, weeds, grass, you know, trash rubbish, I just kind of compiled it all, because the other card, or the other information card didn't have, you know, a whole bunch of information on it, and I just tried to make it more simple, that said, okay, circle this.
Okay, good. Thank you. And we are on page. What's next?
So, Mr. Chairman, before we jump back into that, I, I did want to approach one thing, I know I've said it in a couple meetings, but I think maybe a better way to try to approach this is to look at it from the enforcement standpoint, rather than trying to make the two separate codes, having the one that's sort of the narrowed down that we want, um, you know, maybe the main things that we want, sort of the rat left code that we're creating, and then the second being the, the fallback of the twenty twenty-four code. I think we'd take the twenty twenty-four code and look at what aspects, what parts that we want to be enforced with the, the, with Gordon, uh, being able to do, and then the rest would be enforced maybe through additional requirements, such as a home inspector or a commercial inspector. I think that might be a better way to get this across, rather than having two codes, have just one and have certain sections be enforceable by, in different ways.
So my idea was to incorporate them both into the Bucyrus Maintenance Code.
So my only concern is if you have duplication, I think it's gonna add some confusion, so if you have multiple ones that talk about grass, um, and we're saying you, you apply the rat left code, if you have grass, if it's not there, then you fall back to twenty point four code. I think that adds a lot of confusion, and I do worry about adoption as well with, I mean, obviously, city council has to approve this, and if we go with, um, two codes and try to explain that to them, I'm worried that they don't want to adopt it, and I think that has to be concerned.
So what's your suggestion?
So I, I would suggest that we take the twenty twenty-four code, we adopt it in the whole, but then we change the section where it talks about what can be enforced by the official, um, and I, I lost the, I guess, the property code, or property management enforcement official. We limit what he can enforce to certain sections, mainly exterior things. Then if there's, I know a big point of contention here is that, you know, we feel that, or it's felt that he exceeds his, his expertise on like interiors, so plumbing, electrical, things like that. So if, if the city does want to write a violation for that, because there is something that they want to address with electrical, plumbing, then they have to get a residential home inspector to do a written report to state that these are the issues with electrical or plumbing. So it gives an extra step for the city, and it is an extra cost, and I, I recognize that, but I do think that this is a good way to make sure we still have the availability to moderate properties for electrical, plumbing, interior issues, structural issues, but yet it, it's beyond just limitations of sort of what our current, or what our, our property management's code enforcement, um, agent or officer is able to do now. In fact, he doesn't have expertise, he's all in that stuff.
Right. I understand that, and that fixes another concern we were talking about in previous meeting.
So it's a pretty simple change. If you just change the one section that talks about enforcement and limit it to certain sections of the twenty twenty-four code that he can enforce, and then you state that any of, all the other sections of the code are enforced with a written report from a home inspector or a commercial building inspector, that will, I think, take care of everything we need in a pretty simple step.
Simplifies a lot of stuff.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because if you look at it, you know, Mr. Miller is right. If you look at it, it basically says that it's the burden of the proof on the city to say, yes, this is, this is a violation, but however, if you read, um, the twenty twenty-four code, it basically gives the code official the right to interpret whatever he wants to make the code be without any penalties or defaults unless it goes to court, and then that official cannot be sued in court by the twenty-four code. Okay, so if you take the, and the twenty-four code.
If you go to section one oh five point one, it's a section we have to basically state that we're amending. So it's one oh five point one in the twenty twenty-four code. So right now, it just says that they're able to enforce any type of code. If we change that to state, allow the code official to only be able to enforce sections most relevant to Bucyrus or the rat left code that we were trying to create, so-
Your one oh five?
Point one. So where's this general?
Page ten.
Sorry, it's on page ten. So one oh five is the powers and duties of the code official. So one oh five point one deals with what the official is able to enforce. The way it's written today, or the way that the code is written, he can basically enforce everything in this, uh, twenty point four code. I think what we're trying to do with rat left code is say, we only, in Bucyrus, we only really want the code enforcement agent to be able to enforce these sections, and that's what we're trying to minimize it down to. We can do that here by just simply saying that the code official is hereby authorized and directed to enforce sections, and we can list which sections. I would suggest a lot of the exterior ones, like three oh one, so if you go to like section three oh one in this, you can enforce that, three oh two, three oh three, three oh four, three oh six, three oh seven, three oh eight, et cetera. So we can just pick and choose which sections we want him to be able to enforce. Then we just say, right below that, we'd say all other sections require a written report from an independent licensed home inspector or a licensed commercial building inspector prior to enforcement of the code. So that adds one more layer where we're getting a professional or somebody that has some experience in that to any other sections of the interior, the structural, the plumbing, the electrical. The city would not only have to have Gordon out there, but they'd also have to have some sort of inspector who's qualified to say that this is a problem, do a written report. The good thing about that is, I think it does sort of put a lot more onus on the city to make sure that those are really necessary issues that they're addressing when it comes to interior, and number two, it is no longer, you know, somebody, if the code enforcement officer doesn't have that license or that credential to inspect that, it takes that off of them and puts it in somebody who does.
And when it goes in front of the judge, there's a lot more support there if they're professional.
I tend to agree.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think the intent with, uh, the, uh, rat left code is essentially to set violations that are pretty much obvious, uh, in, in nature, not, not necessarily the, uh, what would seem to be requirements for a new building construction, which I think is, uh, pretty much, uh, what Mr. Miller is, is, uh, going after there with the, the, um, uh, interior inspections. Because of their- Most of the complaints that, uh, property maintenance inspector receives are complaints dealing with issues that, that are visually obvious, not issues that are of, uh, basically hidden nature that a qualified inspector would be finding.
So an inspector would find a outlet, a neg, a neutral wire on the hot, the hot side and a hot side on the neutral wire? I mean, that's what an inspector would find.
Right, that's something that would be buried in the wall internal and not-
That's something Gordon Groves would not find.
Likely not, right, because he wouldn't go into that depth of, uh-
Inspection.
Removing the outlet cover to inspect the wiring.
Well, it's, it's, they got plug-in things now.
Yes, they do, right.
So if we do take this, sorry, Mr. Chairman, if we do take this approach, we really would be left with three questions. Number one, what sections of the twenty twenty-four code do we want the zoning, or I'm sorry, the, the property management, um, inspector to be able to write violations for? And I do think the exterior is where I would focus more than the interior, and then what additional approvals would we need for the rest of the code? So the interior, you know, the electrical, plumbing, I would suggest that we do a residential home inspector licensed in the state of Ohio for residential, and a commercial building inspector for the commercial structures licensed in the state of Ohio. Those are both, uh, Department of Commerce licenses that require them to do continued education, require them to maintain a license, and they're gonna be qualified people, much more than what, uh, we'd likely have a property management inspector. And then the third, the third thing we'd have to address is what additional, uh, elements we'd want. In addition to the twenty twenty-four code, where we've already talked about the vacant structure registration, um, we can talk about fees and penalties, we can talk about remedies when failing to comply as well. Those would be some additional questions we'd want to answer.
So in your version, we're getting rid of the rat left version altogether?
Yes and no. So I do think we use that to now figure out what sections, what was important to us to say that these are the things we want to have enforced by the city. We can take those and now just have that be what the, the property management official, officer can, um, enforce. Everything else would be the, the things that he wouldn't enforce. It would need the, the building inspector or the commercial building inspector. I think it's a little cleaner approach than what we were doing with two different credits.
Anybody have any thoughts?
I agree. I even took some of this information, and I actually went to the Department of Commerce website and looked up the licensing requirements for these people. I actually left it in my printer.
It's a four-year degree.
Yeah. So, you know, but the, the licensed home inspectors is basically an ADR course that you do online, but then you have to take a state test to get your license. So it's not like they just hand it out, you actually have to pass these courses. So, and then there's only one thousand licensed home inspectors in the state of Ohio currently, and-
When I checked into it, it was a four-year, you had to go to school for four years.
For a commercial, but for not, not for a licensed home inspector. It's basically, if you have knowledge or experience and you can take the web-based courses and pass each one of the web-based courses, that you can actually-
For residential?
Huh? For residential only, not commercial. This is for residential only, but then you have to take a state test and pass that state test to get this license through Department of Commerce, which is under the real estate section of the Department of Commerce. So it, it was very lengthy. Now the commercial bidding code, and I looked up the plumbing, the electrical, most of them require five to seven years as adjournment to even apply for any of those licenses. HVAC, plumbing, electrical, structure, you had to, you had to have at least seven, five to seven years as adjournment and meet some other requirements before you could even apply to become licensed as an inspector. And I thought that was kind of like, wow! That was like, but that's on commercial property. So-
So you're residential, you could even waive an inspection, you can have an inspection.
No, you don't have to, but most banks require it if you got a loaner. So the thing is, is that the home inspector at least has a certification backing him up, saying, yes, and this is my written report, just like the written report when they do a home inspection on a house. There is a written report that is given to the homeowner that also goes to the financial institute of what the problems are that they have discovered within that residential.
Goes to the home buyer.
I do think the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, um, I do think the, the Ohio home inspectors for the residential are relatively abundant. I don't think that would be too big of a hurdle to, to find somebody that can help with that.
I think it's four fifty was last I heard, one hundred and fifty dollars to have them inspect the inside of the house.
And the idea is that, and they might, we might be able to get some deal worked out, we can get something cheaper, but I really want to, I don't want to limit the city and not be able to enforce interior violations, but I do think it's worth having an additional person that's qualified looking at interior things. That's, that's more about the safety of the person living there, less about the nuisance to the properties next door. The exterior stuff is what's nuisance to the properties next door. If, on the commercial side, we could also say licensed building inspector or a- If, on the commercial side, we could also say licensed building inspector, or we could tie it in with, you know, the state inspector out of Richland County. If they were, I think they're typically involved anyway when we have a violation with commercial property, and we could just have them do a written report of what the issues are, and then that wouldn't be any additional cost on the commercial side.
So we'd have to file permits with Richland County anyway, the State Department?
They do for commercial property. Correct.
Because we don't have a, a commercial building inspector.
Sorry?
SARS doesn't have a commercial building inspector, everything goes through Richland County.
Right. Everything goes through Richland County.
Right. I'd deal with them all done.
I agree.
Okay.
Me?
Yeah?
I'm okay with it. Yep.
Aaron?
I've said it before, we just did all this for the first part, and the whole point was pointing out what we were doing and what we would cover. And then what we did not have stated was what was ever covered underneath. So our stuff, whatever we wrote up, whether it's the rat lift code or whatever, if we talk about grass in a certain way, we just covered how we cover it, and property maintenance code comes after us. So it's not very confusing to the court when you've got your, what you're pushing right there on top. And for anything that we didn't think about, it's still covered under the International Property Code, which is beneath what we have, kind of, it's the idea of what he's saying without ever, I mean...
We're looking at inside home inspectors.
Yeah, and the inside home, I mean, we talked about that the last time, like, I mean, we've got, Gordon gets called out and invited into a home by the renter who's been complaining to their landlord, who's been complaining to the health department, who's been complaining, and so now here's Gordon taking pictures going, oh yeah, I don't have to be an inspector to even know how bad that is while there's mold coming from the wall because somebody was trying to cover that there was a leak instead of fixing the leak, and now it's starting to fall through. You know, some of this is way obvious, and the stuff Gordon tends to work with, that's interior. He's not the one checking those wires in the wall. That's when he's like, hey, make sure the work gets done properly, but when I walked in here, the wires were sticking on the wall, there was no cover, and things were sparking, you know? It's not usually something that you really need much of anybody. I mean, you could have a kid walk in there and go, yeah, that's not right, for most of the things that I've seen go into the court. So if it's something that needs more, the court's going to say it too. But by that point, you've got the person working on it, you've got the person who okay's the work, you know? That's not Gordon that okay's it, he's just going to be the one that says, yep, this needs to be checked out, here you go. Here's the complaint, here's my pictures of checking out the complaint, and that's where step one starts.
So you think...
So putting wording in that says, you know, once it gets to a certain level of need, yes, we need to bring in an inspector, is great. But I mean, we just add that to what we've been working on, that then adds this in, and it's all put together in a nice neat package, and then presented to counsel so that he can work with it. And he's not going to give us one that he can't work with when we're all done. If it's not working right, he's going to tell us, because he's the one who has to finish enforcing it.
I'm coming, I'm going to him next.
Yep.
Mr. Gurnick? So, do we work, keep working on rat lifts, or do we just use the 2024 and we bring an inspector in on the interior part of it? Or we just use Gordon Groves for the exterior?
So I understand the trouble with having, and even if we in this room understand, if it's covered in this code, then this applies, and everything that's not covered, then we go to the second, it's sort of burdensome. And I think that the goal and the objective of the 2024 and every international property maintenance code is to paint a broad brush of everything, and it may be overkill, but it fully encompasses what it's intended to...
So you're leaning towards both of them?
Oh, I was just saying, I think that by adopting rat lift with modifications, we're reinventing what the 2024 property maintenance code already does, which is outline an entire list of violations. So I think that it, you would be safe to adopt the 2024, and then if you want to make some modifications and say, these are notice provisions that we want to do differently, these are the only portion of the code that's enforceable through our property maintenance, and anything else, we have to go find a independent third-party inspector, you know, you could do that. I also kind of agree with Ms. Sherrick, though. It's all like a proof thing, right? So if I come into your house and I say that your plumbing is not up to what the property maintenance code requires, and you tell me I'm completely full of nonsense, I don't know what I'm talking about, and you have your plumber come and say, yeah, this is all certified, like, you know, you win at that point. I have no, no proof beyond a reasonable doubt or otherwise that your construction, your facility doesn't meet the applicable standards, and you have a plumber that says it does. And so if I want to prove you wrong, I have to go and then hire in an inspector. So, I mean, I think that you're kind of partly getting into what it would take to prove these, and by and large, I mean, it's kind of what the property maintenance appeals board is for, it's kind of what courts are for, you know? I mean, and on the front end, Mr. Gordon, Mr. Grove points out violations, and we address those violations. I don't know, I think that, I would say 95% of the things that are cited are open and obvious and not necessarily subject to much debate, other than, eh, maybe deficient, but you want me to, you know, paint it with blue paint, I'm painting it with lime green, or, you know, like, whatever the, you want me to use PVC pipe, I'm not going to use copper pipe, blah, 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 those types of things. But we don't get into a lot of debates about, you know, issues, because by and large, when there is some sort of structural issue, or something that's going to require expert knowledge, you know, we go out and obtain that. I mean, either through the Richland County, or through the McKeever and Associates, or through independent third parties that we use from time to time. I don't know. I think that you could adopt the 2024 code and then make some modifications to how you want to enforce it, how you want to penalize certain provisions. If you want to say that the property maintenance inspector is only going to be able to enforce those sections which deal with grass, trash, rubbish, weeds, paint dilapidated buildings, whatever, that's great, but your net effect will be that the rest of the code will scarcely get enforced. I mean, I'm not, not going to say that there aren't certain situations where we would go out, but if I have to pay $450 every time I need to do an inspection on an interior of a house or something else, my budget doesn't allow much of that.
Mr. Chairman, I will say one more thing. Thinking of this from a, who is really benefiting from enforcement of the code, being the external that does benefit the adjacent property owners, because a nuisance property next to theirs drives down their property value, encourages, you know, things to happen if you have abandoned rough, or not abandoned, but a property that the grassy grown height, things like that. If you're dealing with the interior things, there's other recourse that a tenant can take. They can go to the court systems, they can put their rent on escrow, they can tell the landlord what needs repaired before they get paid from the escrow. So there is another course of action that they can take to help get those repairs done. If the landlord doesn't do that, they also have the right to be able to move at that point. So the interior stuff, who that benefits is the person living there, and there is a whole nother course of action they can take if it does get scarcely enforced.
Any more thoughts?
And I think, I mean, I agree with you, and I think that in general, that's probably accurate. I also think that a significant portion of the, not significant, but a not insignificant portion of the people that rent don't understand anything about rent escrow. The only time they've ever been to court is the last time they were evicted. The courts are out to get, you know? And so what, they call the health department, the health department refers them to the property maintenance department. They call, I don't know, who else, but everybody refers them to the property maintenance department. Besides the police department, eh, call the property maintenance department. Children's services, call the property maintenance department. Counsel and agent, call the property maintenance department. I get it. I mean, I don't, I don't, there's no perfect answer. I don't disagree. With the health, I mean, I get, right. So there are other remedies available, these are not necessarily the community issues, because my property value isn't affected by the fact that your property has fraying wires and things to that effect, except in the one in 100 chance that it catches on fire, burns down the neighborhood, and then we catch crap because we had the property maintenance, but wouldn't hire a $450 inspector to go do what should have been done. I don't know, public policy considerations.
If, I guess if you do get those situations where a tenant would be complaining about the interior of the property, would your office be able to put together a pamphlet that described what that process is to go to the courts, put your money on escrow? Would that be something that you could provide them, so that way it would help educate them?
Yes, in general, we could put together some sort of, here's how you escrow your, but we also put a disclaimer that we're not giving you legal advice.
There's, Mr. Chairman, there's actually a brochure online. Yep. And it's, it's under three different areas, and one is the Ohio Bar Association. It actually has one of these pamphlets too, to explain what is escrow and what you can and cannot do as a, what they call is tenant rights.
Ms. Sherman?
You know, at one point, it's kind of amusing here in a minute. At one point, I put my rent in escrow and everything, and the lawyer had someone come in and inspect my complaints. Do you know who the lawyer had come in to inspect my complaints?
Gordon Groves.
Another landlord.
No.
He had another landlord come in and inspect my complaints, which was, now that I look back on that, that was so wrong, because he was a slumlord too. So of course, he agreed with, and then the lawyer put him in his, in the paperwork. So I was being screwed by, yeah. And then when he looked at my complaints, one was like the tile coming in the door, I had that tile taped down to the floor. And I was told by the other landlord that was doing the inspection that that was perfectly fine because it wasn't moving. Well, it wasn't moving because I had it taped down.
Gorilla tape.
Huh?
Gorilla tape.
No, duct tape. But it was like coming in when the, the snow would come in the door because there was no screen door, nothing, so it had to, but the lonium was in pieces. And he had another landlord come in and do the inspection. And I can tell you the name, and I'm not going to.
I guess the other, I don't know, I would say 90% of everything that we issue complaints and send notices of violation is exterior things anyways. So we're talking about a very sub, small subset of, I think, homeowners aren't inclined to let us into their property to do inspections, landlords aren't inclined to let us into their properties to do inspections, so it's that small subset of tenants who are dissatisfied with whatever their landlords issue, whatever it is. So I don't, you know, you could do, like Mr. Miller was saying, you say, you know, this is, your best avenue is rent escrow, here's the process, you know, if, you know, I don't know. Or on the flip side, there's different scenarios where, you know, we pay for the inspection upfront, and then that's something that we could pass off a portion or that fee based upon what the findings are, those types of things. I, it's just hasn't been something I've thought about significantly, but I don't know, you know, we, so I guess my...
On the property tax, then?
Yeah, we passed it on the property, uh, yeah. But it's, it's a small subset of what we actually are spending most of the time on. And so, I mean, it's an issue, but I don't know, it's something that I would fall on the sword and get up and pound my fist, because it's, what we're generally doing is, you know, abandoned cars, weeds, you know, mattresses, I don't know. We're in houses very frequently. And I would say, Mr. Grove also, not that we're going to talk about this, but has talked about residential rental inspections yearly, annually, lots of different communities have those to ensure that they meet, you know, basic habitability. Not that that's before this committee, but that's one thing that, and if we did ever pass that, we'd probably have to hire an independent outside or home, you know, licensed home inspector.
So didn't we pass something, I had a previous meeting that said it was the current IPMC?
Yep, the most current, up-to-date.
Most current, up-to-date.
Property maintenance code. Yep, that was at the very first meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? As Mr. Gurnick was talking about, you know, if some of the stuff from this code we want to put in here, the current 2012 code that we currently use, on the front cover, it lists the sections that state certain things, and also if you go to, the legislation part was Xi, which is in the front of the 24 code. It specifically states, section two, as the following sections are hereby revised. So it's basically listed in there that if we want to add anything of the, what you guys call, I call it the second code, I don't call it rat lift, but the second code, that can be then inserted into the 24 code or the current code, wherever we're going to, and then you could do a review of any time, because right now it's what, every four years now, two years, four years internationally?
Three or four, if we have a name.
Yeah. So then at that point in time, you could do another review to see what changed out of the 24 code into the next code or whatever. Or then you can make simple modifications to certain sections that you want to add into the code. And that way, it's not, we don't have two codes, we have actually one code that has certain sections inserted into the current international property maintenance code to make it more simplified for everybody, saying, okay, if you go to this section, here's the cross-reference that that's what this means. It makes it more easier and understandable for people that we have one book and, you know, one, one code, one code only.
Right, and I'll do what I did on the 2012 one as well. I'll put the city of SARS logo and put direct reference points.
And makes it so much easier. And then some of the stuff we were working on is basically some of the same language in the 24 code. So all we have to do is just go back and cross-reference everything out of the 24 code for what has been written down, just to see if we need to insert, like, what was that one thing, Aaron, ornamental grass? Was that what it is? Okay, I did remember that. So basically, then you could insert that to include ornamental grass. It's a simple... It's a simple fix to not writing something completely out all the time. All you're doing is changing the verbiage or adding to it. And that's it.
So we would add this as a chapter to the current code.
I think what you do is actually reference what sections you want changed in the front of the, on the ordinance that is adopting this. Miranda, maybe you can speak a little bit more of how this looks.
So what I did in the 2012 was I took each section that was updated per the Bussaras codified ordinance and I kind of put it on the front and kind of put the exact section and what it is, what has changed. So I would be able to do that with anything that we take out of the second property maintenance code and just kind of put it on the front as a generalized summary of everything that would be pertaining to specifically Bussaras.
That's what she's talking about.
Yeah.
Basically all she's doing is cross-reference this code into what actually we're adding or subtracting from the verbiage is all it is. That's all it is.
And there are sections like fines, penalties, remedies that are actually addressed in here, there's specifically a unit on it, that we have to add, what are our fines, what are our penalties? So there are already things we have to add to this, but it really limits the scope of what we have to do versus, and it makes it simpler.
Agreed. So essentially what we're doing is taking the Bussaras, the rat lift, for lack of a better word, and just incorporating it into the International Property Maintenance Code.
And I've submitted the changes that we've already made to Brian, so if, I don't know if it would be easier for Brian to make it more specific to, so that way I can do this on the outside, because I know that we'll have to go through and update the entire codified ordinance to do that. Because we've already changed it to do the most updated code, but then when we insert what we want to like, for it to read, it'll also have to be changed in the codified ordinance for the different sections that we're revising to kind of follow suit, which is how I got these sections.
Okay.
But that is something that sounds like it's doable?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
I'm ready.
I'm not opposed to using the 2024 or the current property maintenance, International Property Maintenance Code to fall back on for issues that we might not cover with the second code or rat lift code, or whatever you prefer to call it. Initially, it was proposed, I'll say I proposed, that the rat lift code be gone through and studied and changes made, updated for the City of Bussaras for the health and safety needs of the City of Bussaras. There's a lot in the International Property Maintenance Code that requirements that kind of go beyond the scope of health and safety, such as latches on windows, chipped paint, things like that, you know, that really aren't essential health and safety items. I, I think we're just kind of going beyond what was originally intended here. So I'm not opposed to using the 20, or the current International Property Maintenance Code. I just think that, I, I still believe that Gordon Grove or any property maintenance inspector that we have should have the ability, the knowledge to be able to even do internal inspections and see that there's pipes leaking and mold growing on walls and decayed structural, visible structural items of a building that, I mean, it, it's something that's obvious that it doesn't take a certified licensed qualified inspector to see those items. And those are the things that we really need to concentrate on or a code for the inspector to follow for the City of Bussaras.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not opposed of writing that in the, into the inserts at all, you know, because basically if there's exposed wires and they're arcing, okay, the property maintenance code official can call the city fire department and they can come out because they have certified fire safety inspectors by the state of Ohio, okay, that can issue a citation, okay, for that reason. Okay? So there is, the fire department actually has the Ohio Fire Code at their disposal that can issue citations, okay, for certain things in the Ohio Fire Code only, which is a benefit also because then you have another means to go through certain other points. But I agree with you, if there's obviously certain things and we can delete certain things from the 24 code, like you said, chipped paint, so we just put in section whatever, delete, and that's all you have to do. You don't have to actually, you know, give everybody everything. You could go in some, like the window crap, okay, and the screens, okay? You can actually go in and modify that to say that section we're deleting from the code. And that's all, it's simple as that. You can add or subtract anything you want from the code according to this document. So it, it makes it simpler to do, and I agree, anything obviously should be done and corrected immediately. Okay, I have no problems with that. And where you don't have to hire a home inspector. But, but who caused the damage? Was it due to neglect or was it done by the tenant? You know, that's the question too there. Did they maliciously destruct it just to get back at the property owner? You know, that's a good question to ask. So like I said, you can add and delete whatever you want in this code and make it really simple.
And I would say it is a consideration, but who created the damage isn't really the city's prerogative. We would just want to ameliorate any safety risk. And then if it's a tenant's issue, then the landlord has their legal remedies. If it's the landlord's issue, the tenant has their legal remedies. We just, you know, to Mr. Stuckert's point, want to assure the safety and, you know, whatever. But, I mean, I think, so I, I think you probably all know, but we don't actually, if you go to Bussaras codified ordinance, the 2012 property maintenance code isn't specifically listed out. We just incorporated it by reference. So I'm gonna hate myself for this, but you could specifically delete the things out of the main, 2024 property maintenance, if you don't want chipped paint, if you don't want window latches, whatever, go through line by line, delete those, and then we could actually publish on the internet and in our code, the remainder with the incorporated terms up front, this is how we're going to do it, submit that, call it a day, and then we would be done.
Call it a Bussaras maintenance code.
Right. And I understand, so then every forty or three years, there would be plausible ad hoc meetings to talk about, well, there's these new, or as issues arise. But that would at least put a one comprehensive, this is what we're going to enforce, this is, it's on this, you don't have to reference this, you don't have to look and say, oh, that portion is specifically not going to be enforced, even though it's in the book. I mean, I guess in my mind, that would be the most way to wrap it all up, put it in one thing, call it a day.
So Miranda, you know what we want? You put that together for us?
No, Miranda's laughing because she's like, nope, Brian's doing it.
So Mr. Chairman, one, one other thing I, I did sort of, when I originally stated this, sort of separated between the interior and exterior because that was a logical break. If we did want the general electrical issues, the general plumbing issues to be something that can be issued violations from the, the property management official, you can just incorporate like section 504.1, which is the general plumbing. And you can incorporate section 505.1, which is the water systems. So you can pull out the general ones from each of those sections, which will allow him to point out the obvious things, the, the broken pipes, the mold on the ceiling, the things like that. So if you stick to the general stuff, it would give him the availability to do that. If we get into what is the proper bathrooms for that facility, then we'd need an expert to be able to say that. That's the other sections that we wouldn't necessarily want our property management official to be able to, or officer to say. So there is a way that we can incorporate those general ideas for the interior and have that listed.
So that's more or less what we want to do, right? Because Mr. Miller's was saying, we don't want to overlap and have something contradicted in this that's going to be contradicted in our other, so we just need one instead of two.
Right, yeah.
So you want to put that together for us?
You look at me, right?
You guys can work together.
Yes, logistically, in a month or six weeks, you guys will be emailed a comprehensive, this is the proposed legislation, that prior to us all sitting down, you guys go through it, X out the portions that we don't want this to apply, we don't want that to apply. And through emails and things, we can put together, we can put together a draft that we can then sit here, finalize and move on.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds great to me.
And it will include ornamental grass, right? You know ornamental grass is already in the International Property Maintenance Code.
Yeah, but, but it's something that we go out and we pour here.
Okay.
We disagree. We have been told things that are not ornamental grass are ornamental grass.
We're starting all over again, basically.
No, the changes stay.
No, so Miranda has sent me the comments and the, we want this, we don't want this, from the past two or three meetings that I wasn't here, plus the-
You're gonna take the rat lift one and we-
Rat lift, incorporate it into the International Property Maintenance and then put it in a one-piece ordinance that then you guys can review and constructively comment on.
So we can pick it apart and send it back to him.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
The one question I guess I have is, you mentioned incorporating the entire code versus reference. I don't know if that, I, I don't think that's necessary to incorporate the entire code because I, I like the idea of having the flexibility of having the current code be the code that we use versus, so is that what your thought was, is to, to do it still through reference, but then we can basically do the, the additions, subtractions on the front like we, we did in the current 2022?
It's up to you guys. Yeah, I mean, I, I understand that thought process, but if I'm Joe Citizen and I'm flipping through the International Property Maintenance Code, am I going to pick up that, oh, well, section 505.3 doesn't apply because they specifically excluded that? I don't know, but, but I get it, yeah. I mean, it's way easier for longevity purposes to just incorporate that, the current code, and then when they modify the current, you're still stuck with the same problem when they modify it though, because they're going to add provisions, delete provisions in 505.3 and this one's chipped paint and 505.3 in the 2027 one is going to be lead paint, I don't know, something, I don't know, it's up to you guys. It's interesting to me.
That might be a question we want to get addressed before, which approach he's taking.
So you want to know whether he's incorporating the Wagner with the 2024 or the 2024 with the Wagner? More or less.
So you could, if you had the ordinance, you could actually print the entire code in there with the additions and subtractions that we asked for. Or the alternative would be, you still just do it as a reference, but then you say, we're using this code, but here's all your deletions and subtraction, or deletions and additions. The more I, I guess I heard it, and the fact that either way, when the code updates, we're going to have to sort of revisit it, maybe it is better to have the entire code written into this.
I know, no, but I know, we referenced the International Property Maintenance Code and I can find it, but I know a lot of people are like, well, I can't get it. And so, but I mean-
I think we can put it on the website.
Yeah.
After we get it done.
Right, well, if we, if we do it the one way, it's going to be on your Bussaras codified ordinance when you go look up everything else, it will all be there. If we do it by reference, then we would probably want to put it on the website, on the flip side.
You guys are losing me in all this messaging. So here, let me simplify this.
Do you want to trade seats?
We're going to take the 24, the 21, or the 12, and rat lifts. And we're going to go section 104.1. We're going to read that in each one of these things. And then we're going to break it down and simplify it, but then add in what we've changed and make it the code for that section. Is that what, then what are we saying?
So we're, we're actually looking at two different situations right now. The first would be to incorporate the 2024 code as reference. So we'd say, the City of Bussaras in our ordinance, we'd say, the City of Bussaras has adopted the 2024 version.
So that's our big, that's our big book right there.
Yes. So that's, we'd incorporate as is, and then we'd say, incorporate it, but here's all our changes. So section 301 should say this instead of this. Section, and we'd do it that way. The other option would be to take this code, do all of our additions and subtractions in it, and then just publish that version in the ordinance itself. I do think that would be more user friendly to the public and the fact that they can now go to that ordinance where it was passed and see the entire code versus having to go to another link and then revert back and look at what was added and subtracted.
Same for longevity purposes, I don't think it's six, one half dozen of the other that I want to think about.
I do too.
So unless you guys are strongly opposed to it, I would just put it all in the code, in the actual Bussaras codified ordinance and, so it's all published there.
My only other thought would be cost. Is there any cost to having, per page, that we have to pay for?
Do you know, I know, they send us a bill every six months, but I don't know if it's dependent on what we do.
When I update it, so.
Charge it to Brian's.
It's usually.
So then to-
I already told you it's going to be $450.
Two thousand. Because they also maintain it and update it when we send the-
But the actual publication cost for like passing that ordinance is just going to be-
It's going to be the paragraph that says what, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Summary.
Yes.
So what, what we're doing now is we're taking the 24 and that's our Bible, okay? And we are taking what we've decided to add and subtract and put it in the Bible to make it one legitimate, so we're not doing 12, 12 or rat lifts.
Some of what rat lift and what you guys have discussed will be incorporated.
Yeah, that's what I mean, in the adding and the subtracting of the-
Right, but it'd all be in one thing.
Yeah, they'll all be like, yes. So I agree. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Now I'm not so lost.
All right. Oh.
Yeah, you want to approve my minutes?
Yeah, we need to approve some minutes here. We have approval for the minutes from April 9th, 2024, special ad hoc meeting. Approval of the minutes from April 23rd, 2024, special ad hoc meeting. And approval of the minutes for May 14th, 2024, special ad hoc meeting.
Can you do it as one or do it as one?
You do it collectively.
You can do it as one.
Selectively.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, I didn't.
First year bubble.
You good?
I'll just set up the next time that you guys would like to meet.
So we are going to give Mr. Gurn some time to put all this together.
He said like six to eight weeks.
So I can- I can, I can contact all of you when I receive it, essentially.
So he's going to send it to us too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get it out, that way you all have it, not the day of their next meeting.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned.
At what time?
Mr. Chairman. The last minute, we did have some discussion about, on the issue of registrations of, uh, the rental properties. Do we want to discuss that anymore or?
Registrations.
I think we had-
Refresh my memory because I want to hear.
I think we had some concerns about legalities of disclosing information. I think Mr. Wong brought up.
Sure did.
Yeah.
So we had talked about that because it's already in the code, landlords have to register. Um, but there's no enforcement mechanism and the auditor who was the one had brought it up through the tax department, basically said at this point, uh, they're not interested in proceeding messing with rental registration and things.
Okay, so that, that includes then tenant registration as well then as, as, uh?
Yeah, that's what it was, tenant rosters and things to that effect. Through the income tax department. They were okay with letting that go for now.
Anything else?
Yep.
Yes?
Okay, this has nothing to do with council. But before we adjourn, may I say what I want to say? Because you're all going to get up and walk away while I, if you tell me I can do it after you adjourn.
It should have to be with the Property Maintenance Code.
Well, it doesn't. But it's just a special.
Can I adjourn and say it?
Okay, if everybody stays in their seat.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Okay. Okay.
Six twelve.
Stop it.